...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Ye.
Trustee Heinz.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And we're all here this evening. Moving on to public participation, the first item is public comments. This is a two-minute opportunity. If any member of the public is here today that wishes to address the board, since I definitely don't see anybody that's not scheduled to be on the meeting, I'll turn it over to Director of Finance for an update on the Spear.
Thank you, Village President Brawley. This morning Spear Financial ran the bid for our 2014 bonds to restructure our debt service. I'd like to say that that bond sale went very well. We do have a representative from Spear, Anthony Micali, who is going to get up and make a few comments. And then if there are any questions afterwards, Anthea and myself can certainly answer those.
Good evening, everybody. As Justin mentioned, we went out for bid today for the Village's taxable general obligation alternate refunding bond series 2014. So these restructured a piece of the 2010 bonds, which are paid by utility taxes from the Village. Really successful sale today. Ended up receiving 34 bids from eight bidders on this deal, which is, it shows a really strong demand for the Village's bonds. And I think one of the biggest factors to that demand was the Village's bond rating. It was rated AA from S&amp;P, which is just two notches away from a AAA rating, which is the highest that they'll give. And kind of taking, going back a step, last year when we did a bond sale, the Village was rated AA3 from Moody's, which is the equivalent of one notch below the current S&amp;P rating. After that sale, both Moody's and S&amp;P, they changed the way that they view general obligation bonds and changed the way that they calculate a rating. So it was kind of a perfect time to take a step back and think, which rating agency would really serve the Village well here? Which is going to view the Village in the best light? And Justin made a great decision to try S&amp;P for this one. And both Jeff and Justin were on the call and delivered it, you know, an excellent presentation to S&amp;P, and they came out with a AA stable rating, which really, really helps drive the demand for a bond sale. A couple of other factors that really helped today's sale were, there's really been a shortage of municipal bonds or a lack of supply, and that is especially true for taxable municipal bonds, which this was. So with that, there's a lot of hungry investors out there, so that always helped. And also, in the last 10 days, the Treasury bond, 10 years specifically, has rallied a bit in yield, so that's helped quite a bit as well for today's sale. Winning bidder was Benardi Securities out of Chicago. The true interest cost to the Village on the sale was a 3.2167 percent after the revision of the sale. So, successful sale. The next seven bidders rounded out between 3.25 percent and 410. So a pretty wide range there, but the few that grouped towards the top really had a strong demand for the Village's bonds. If there's any questions, we have to answer.
Excellent. What does that result in? I know we were estimating a four. What's the difference in savings that would be for us?
Before the bond sale, Spear had estimated approximately 4 percent for the true interest cost, and this results in approximately $200,000 less in interest that the Village will pay over the remaining life of those bonds.
See, now we know why you're so excited about this. This is awesome. Are there any questions of Justin or Spear on this? And I probably should have had you come for the action item on the agenda, but at any rate, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, moving on. I'll move on to item B this evening, which is the public hearing on the budget. And I'll open the public hearing and ask Director of Finance, Justin Van Born, for his report.
Sure. The Village Board intends to provide a statement to conduct a public hearing on the budget before it passes the budget. We are scheduled to pass the budget at the April 15th. The revenues and expenses have both been updated to the current numbers. The Board has some projections that some of these numbers may have certain... ...questions. Do you now want to direct the people to pass the budget?
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that's here this evening that wishes to address the budget? Do we have a public hearing for the second reading or no?
No.
Just one public hearing? Awesome. And then what I'll do is I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll move on, and we'll discuss this during our action item or items for separate action, but we're not approving this tonight. Okay? Thank you. Move on to item C under public participation this evening, which is Michael Cobb, the Executive Director of Hesit House regarding the River Run donation. With that, I'll turn it over to Engineer Wallers.
Thank you, President Brawley. This evening, we're going to be handing over our proceeds from the last River Run, and there's a representative from Hesit House here just to first start by giving some background as to what the monies would be used for and maybe the general purpose and operation of Hesit House, and then we'll do the presentation and turn it over, so.
Excellent.
Hello. My name is Neil McMenamin. I'm the Associate Director over at Hesit House. I've been there for about 15 years now. First want to just say thank you, guys, for choosing us to receive these funds. To give a really brief overview, at Hesit, what we're trying to do is build a one-stop shop, have as many solutions and opportunities for the guests that we serve. So at Hesit House, we have the Overnight Emergency Shelter, which a lot of people are familiar with. We also have a Transitional Living Community. It's heavy family, staffed with families or full of families that are moving forward, saving money, going through employment classes, and moving towards saving money for first month's rent, taking care of expenses and bills, and moving forward. We also have a Lighthouse Permanent Supportive Housing Program, working with some people that were getting into housing in the community and continuing to offer some supportive services to help them transition well. The other idea is with funds like these, it allows us to target specific needs. So when we see, you know, somebody that's starting to move forward and there's something that has to be overcome, and it could be helping with something like daycare, and they've applied for subsidy, and they started working, but the subsidy hasn't come through yet, to help them be able to work, have kids in daycare, with a smooth transition, so they can then save money and move forward. So when some different needs like that happen, or somebody that is going for a job interview that doesn't have funds to get there, to help those things happen. So we're very appreciative of funds along these lines. They help fill a lot of the gaps that traditional grants that help fund salaries or operations don't specifically address.
Excellent.
All right. So I'm probably one of the last remaining people on the committee, so it's my duty to do the presentation this evening. We're happy to donate the $3,000 to Hesit House. We think it's a good cause.
Hey, Pete, you just want to come up here? As much as I like the door and the pictures, it's in way too many pictures. Thanks.
Teresa's always in.
Does he get to take the big check?
That won't fit in the ATM, I don't think.
Excellent. Thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate everything that you guys certainly do in the Montgomery area, you know, obviously in the Aurora, Montgomery area, and we look forward to working with you guys in the future. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It is three items long. I will read them and entertain a motion for approval. The minutes of the Village Board meeting of March 24th, 2013, the accounts payable through April 8th of 2014, and the building report for March of 2014. Just to back up, the item A, March 24th, that should be 2014, correct? Okay. And if there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
We'll move.
Move?
Second.
Second. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Move on to items for separate action this evening. The first item is Ordinance 1615, which is adopting the operating and capital improvement budget for fiscal year. It's fiscal year 15, right? It says 2014, yeah. And this is the first reading, so we won't take action on this this evening. With that, I'll ask Administrator Zofel for an overview.
Thank you very much. You know, based on the discussions we've had here at the Board level in the past meetings, we have added or deducted things from the budget. This is first reading. We need second reading and adoption of the budget at our meeting on the 28th. So tonight, if possible, we'd like to, you know, answer any final questions you may have. If there are additional items you would like to discuss or to add to the budget, remove from the budget. If we can't come to consensus on some tonight, we could still do it at the Committee of the Whole, but if we could tonight, that would be good. I mean, there's one item I know that we need to discuss, which is the Lieutenant's position. I know we need to get some consensus on that, but if there are other items out there you want to discuss, this would be the time. And with that, I will open it up to you.
Excellent. I know we have one, but are there... Who wants to go first?
Want me to go first?
Sure.
Okay. So I've prepared a couple of comments. As you recall, at the last meeting, I had informed, sorry, I had informed the Board that I was questioning the need for the proposed lieutenant position. You should have received the packet that I was given when I met with the Chief and the Deputy Chief, and since that time, I've also requested some additional information consisting of a memo as well as time sheets. I have not changed my mind on this item. I still disagree with the idea of a lieutenant position for several reasons. First, I do not believe the department is large enough to warrant three people in an administrative or executive level position. We have 25 full-time sworn officers. That number includes a sergeant on extended leave, the Chief, the Deputy Chief, as well as the proposed lieutenant position. 25 minus 4 leaves us 21 sworn officers to be supervised by three administrative-level positions. But within the 21 full-time sworn officers, we have a layer of sergeants. We have four patrol sergeants and a detective sergeant. So now we're looking at 16 full-time sworn officers to be supervised by five sergeants as well as the three administrative-level people. I would also point out in the memo we received from the Chief, he did also add in that we have six part-time officers, so that was added into the latest information. So I did want to at least acknowledge that. If we take a look at the memo that the Chief prepared for us, it's comparing the neighboring communities. The three that are closest to us in population size are Yorkville, North Aurora, and South Elgin. All three communities each have three administrative-level positions. They have a Chief and they have two Deputy Chiefs. However, all three communities have more full-time officers than we do. Two out of the three communities that I'm pointing out have smaller populations than the Village of Montgomery. Yorkville is smaller than us, and they have 27 full-time officers and seven part-time officers. North Aurora is also smaller than Montgomery, and they have 28 full-time officers. South Elgin is a little bit larger than we are. They're about 4,500 more people. Their police department consists of 32 full-time officers. For me, our personnel numbers do not justify building at the executive level. I will always be in favor of putting more police officers on our streets. I think the comparables show we should be adding at our officer rank. I also strongly favor adding at least one more sergeant, and that brings me to my next point, the time sheets that I had requested for the sergeants. I reviewed roughly the last year of the sergeant's time sheets. It went from the middle of April last year to the end of March this year. This proposed lieutenant position is being touted as a savings because the sergeant who would get the promotion would not be eligible for overtime. So I took a look at the overtime for our sergeants. And in that timeframe, we had one sergeant who made over $30,000 in overtime pay. The next highest number was just under $27,000 in overtime pay. The next highest number was just over $22,000 in overtime pay, and the fourth patrol sergeant made just over $17,000 in overtime pay. The total amount paid out in overtime for the patrol sergeants is $96,400. I did not include the detective sergeant, since he's focused more on investigations versus supervising our officers who are on the street. Also, our newest sergeant was promoted in August of 2013. However, several of the time sheets prior to his promotion listed him as an acting sergeant. So I will concede that overtime number may be slightly inflated because I didn't know his rate prior to him acting as a sergeant or receiving the promotion. The $96,400 is a tremendous amount of overtime for our sergeants. Even when we apply the proposed savings of $7,000 to $9,000, we would still be paying roughly $87,500 to $89,500 in overtime to our sergeants. When I look at the big picture, I'm weighing out that $7,000 to $9,000 in savings versus the overtime we still have to pay our sergeants. The proposed lieutenant position salary, when I did the math with that rate, is 87, excuse me, $89,700, 800 range, and no overtime. But it still leaves us in the same situation. We only have four sergeants then to supervise the officers on the street. We lose the detective sergeant position because the investigations will now fall under the lieutenant position. And we still end up paying the $87,000 to $89,000 in overtime to our sergeants. That amount is more than enough to pay another sergeant. The starting salaries are in the 70 range, like mid-70 range. The amount of overtime pay for our sergeants is just screaming to me that that's where we need to be adding some personnel. I don't know if my fellow Board members had an opportunity to review the time sheets. I think it's important to note that in addition to the sergeant who's on extended leave, we also have another sergeant who is out on a 12-week leave. I also noticed that most of the patrol sergeants have the same two days off. This is concerning to me. I am concerned about the sergeants being able to cover the daily shifts to back up our officers who are out on the street. Right now, with the two, excuse me, with the second sergeant out, we have only three sergeants to supervise our officers. So what happens if we have another injury, an illness, or a situation where a sergeant has to be away for a couple of days? What if we have another major incident? We've had a couple in the last few months, and we have no sergeant on duty. Now, I will say, I am completely confident that our officers know what they need to do, but I think it would be, I think we should have a supervisor immediately available to support them and back them up. The last point of why I don't think we should do this lieutenant position, the addition of the lieutenant position to the administrative level makes a relatively small department very top-heavy. And the Chief and the Deputy Chief and I discussed this very briefly when we met a couple of weeks ago. We're looking at over $300,000 for the Chief, the Deputy Chief, and the lieutenant to run the department. I'm not comfortable with this situation based on what I've just shared with you this evening. So in summary, I do not think the time is right to add a lieutenant to our ranks. We do not have the personnel to justify three people in the top level with combined salaries over $300,000. I firmly believe we should be adding more officers and looking to promote another sergeant. I would recommend and request that we pull the lieutenant, the proposed lieutenant position, from the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
I have a question regarding the amount of overtime that these sergeants are working. Our sergeants are basically working foreman, right? They're on the street. They're an officer on the street. So this overtime percentage of that is, and I don't need you to nail it down, but is them being a patrol officer as opposed to being a sergeant? They're filling in shifts, they're covering...
Yeah, our sergeants are active, answering calls on the street. There is a part of that overtime that's, we're not able to control. Sick time, training, court, those are things I can't control.
So they're not working all this overtime as a sergeant? It's, they're an officer on the street in a lot of these situations?
Yeah, they, there's not, the administrative sergeant is filling in for the sergeant that she referred to that's out on medical for 12 weeks. So they're in the squad car, just like an officer is.
So one thought that I have on this, and Trustee Spurling, I appreciate your in-depth research on this, and it actually kind of opened my eyes on the situation as well. I don't mean to speak for the Chief, but I would think that he would love to have more patrol officers on the street. You know, he'd love to have the additional sergeant. Sometimes what you love to have doesn't quite work out with the funds you have available. But I do see merit in the discussion that when you see the time cards, it's actually is around about, that we actually saw those, you know, it wasn't really part of the lieutenant discussion. But when you see the time cards and you see that you have individuals working, you know, 55 hours a week consistently, you start to wonder about them getting burnt out. When you see $90,000 a year in overtime, maybe it's something to analyze. Not that it's a decision that should be made here today, but I think she hit the issue right on the head in that we would, we would love to have an additional person on the street, and I would hate for myself to make a decision to pull one person out of the street so that, off the street, so that we have, you know, more of our administrative stuff taken care of. So I think from where I sit this evening, I'd like to see that we either review this further or, or pass on this now and discuss this later. We can obviously, you know, amend the budget in a future time. But definitely just poke some holes in the, in the argument. And I'd much prefer to see a patrol officer or an additional sergeant that's on the street. You know, we've had a few instances that were handled very well by our staff, and I, and I want that to continue, and I don't want us to move away from people on the street. Those are my thoughts.
Ken, and I appreciate Teresa getting all this data from you guys and doing a good job of inspecting it. Could you, I never, all I seen all the time was 20 cents an hour, 5 percent here or there. She just came up with the amount of $17,000 more, say from 70, $70,000 for a lieutenant and, no, $87,000 for a lieutenant and 70 for a sergeant. Is that what the difference is? Is that in the budget, money-wise?
No, we, we were going to, we asked to promote a sergeant, which would be 5 percent above. So you take the difference of what he made, and he, his level is 5 percent above the lieutenant, similar to anybody who gets promoted gets to be above the highest-ranking officer. So if we promote an officer to sergeant, the HR manual says that it's 5 percent above the highest-paid sergeant. So the lieutenant, we would propose that the lieutenant would be 5 percent higher than the highest-paid sergeant. But that's not, the only addition is the difference, not, we're not asking to have another sergeant or to backfill an officer in a sergeant. We, Armando and I discussed this early in the fall. We knew the budget was tight. We wanted to save the Village the best amount of money we could, and that's what we came up with. We didn't want to add another staff member. We talk about salary, but then you should add a third for benefits. So if you're going to pay a sergeant 76, technically, it's, it'd cost the Village 110, and we can defer to Justin for that. But it's about 28 percent to 30 percent on top of the salary for benefits, so.
What, what was I going to say? No. Can you answer some of her questions on the, because all I could think of is you got five sergeants, okay, and you're going to have one guy, like you two are gone. Now you got five guys there, and you're going to say to one of the five, you're the sergeant for today. Now that guy can look at the other four and go, "It's nice, but we're all the same. Why, I don't want this job. Why don't you give it to him?" In other words, it's kind of a, I know you two guys can't be everywhere, but actually it could happen with a lieutenant. But I know Sergeant Sullivan took a lot of the days like Christmas and some of these days, if I'm not mistaken. He took the holidays so he would get overtime, and because a lot of the other guys wanted off. So I know he did that for years. Whether he does it now, I know he did it in the earlier years.
And you're absolutely right. We can't control when they make triple time on a holiday. And that's the, that's when you start looking at figures, that's how it gets up that high. There are a lot of, she made a lot of good points. There are a lot of questions to be answered. I have a few. I was handwriting quickly. I could answer a few of those.
If you could.
And just, President Brawley, just to clarify, we're not taking anybody off the street. This doesn't affect the street. This doesn't affect the patrol officers. That's why they weren't in the, in the original memo, because they didn't have an effect on this. What we're, what we're planning and proposing is, if you look at those other departments, I understand the population, but we're all running a police department. In Armando's span of control, which means who he supervises, on the right side of that column, he has the most. He has five. Everybody else averages between 2-point-something and no higher than, than 2.66, whereas he, his number is five. So he has a lot of people to supervise for one person. That's why we're adding the rank, so it can be divided. The four amounts of overtime that Trustee Spurling, one of those amounts would go away, because that lieutenant's position would be an exempt position. They don't make overtime. So we just look at what's the best scenario, what is the average. I was conservative when I said 7,000 to 9,000, but I didn't have time to go and look at it like, like she did. So today, tonight, I would say that we'd probably save closer to 15 or 20 by those numbers in overtime. Anything else, Deputy Chief?
Chief, can I point something out? When I was calculating the amount of overtime, I did not include the detective sergeant's overtime in that total of the 96,4. That would be an additional, it's very close to 19,000 so far. So it would actually be higher than the 96, and then we would say one of those would go away. So the four that I calculated was for the patrol sergeant. So we would still have four patrol sergeants, and we'd still be paying out overtime to four patrol sergeants.
Yeah, that is correct. And that, that just furthers my point. If you, if you If you, if you take one sergeant away and make him a lieutenant, now you'll save whatever the average is of those five. Let's average them. The average is about 22 to 23. You'll still have that. I'm not sure we would be able to, we monitor it, but I'm not sure we'll be able to decrease that.
I have a question. Can, as I listen to the questions and the commentary and stuff, am I right in thinking that it's really two issues? We're, if we separate the issues, we've got to, you guys are wanting a lieutenant position for more of the, um,
Management.
The management side, but regardless, we're still going to have this, this overtime problem. We're going to have this overtime problem regardless. If we do the lieutenant position, and, and I know that the board in the last year, we've, we've continued to push for more officers. But we're always going to have that overtime, or we're always going to have that overtime problem until we really begin to bring more and more officers on. Because based upon the information that you provided, as far as the, the number of people at the various other agencies, we're extremely light. And if we're on task to really get to that level, aren't we going to need someone to, in like a lieutenant position? Because I understand what they're saying as far as, okay, we're all sergeants here. I really can't tell you guys what to do. There's got to be some sort of chain of command. And if that doesn't happen, or if it's one day Doug's in charge, the next day Stan's in charge, and the next day Matt's in charge, well, how, what, what does that solve? But I think that we're always going to have that overtime problem, whether it be sergeant or patrol officer or whoever, until we get to staffing levels that we, we really need where we can get a system that really effectively works. Am I looking at that correctly?
Yes.
I would say that's a fair analysis of what we were talking about. That spurred one question. Currently, let's say it's after five, you know, after the normal workday and the chief and deputy chief are, are at home and there's an incident. Or I guess in a general sense, if there's two sergeants that are working, who, does one outrank the other? I mean, do you have a, I'm assuming that you have some, some form of hierarchy for that.
Yes, I will, I'll answer that. When we, when Armando and I go home, there's a sergeant on duty, but there's never two sergeants on patrol. So we, we have a patrol sergeant that would call Armando and then call me. If it's something serious, then I call you. We do have a detective sergeant that works Tuesday through Saturday. He's off Sunday, Monday right now. But there's never two sergeants on patrol. No. Say.
If I could just say a few things real quick. I think this is all great discussion. Just a few items to clarify. When we're speaking about the population or when Trustee Spurling mentioned the number of officers and sergeants, what we're talking about is the number of sergeants that I have responsible for. So it's not sergeants to officers. We're talking about command staff to sergeants. And that's where that number shows that I have five. The other departments you mentioned, their highest number is 2.6, meaning one deputy chief or lieutenant is responsible for two and a half sergeants. I have doubled that responsibility. So my span of control is more. So we're not talking about sergeants to officers. That this sergeant's responsible for 10. So that's just one clarification. There is a problem, yes, the overtime is a problem. What, what we've done to be fiscally responsible is try to eliminate some of that problem by saying, if, if we said, okay, we want another sergeant, then we're going to get an officer from our bank of eligible sergeants. So now we have to promote a sergeant and their salary, also replace an officer. So you're, we're asking them for two people right now to solve it as a sergeant. If we need another sergeant, that's how we would have to solve it. We'd have to ask for a sergeant and then an officer to fill in that sergeant, plus their salary.
And you still have, now you have six.
Correct.
Now you'd have six to oversee.
Now we'd have six sergeants. So then that would increase my span of control as well. Again, we, we thought what would be fiscally responsible as we try to run the operation, if we, if we were, if we thought that could, was the best solution, then surely, if, yeah, if we could get another officer and a sergeant and we could do that this year, that would, but that costs even more money. The overtime issue, again, this will help alleviate it, but that is an issue that's going to be there that we won't be able to, to eliminate entirely. We can, again, manage it and this will assist with that, but it's not going to just, it's something that till we're up to full staff, it's still going to be an issue on it.
Real quick, would this lieutenant position be a, a day job? Like a nine to five type of thing, or is that?
And they, and they're Saturday, yes.
It would, yeah, however, that would, it would depend. Right now, that, that position may fill in where we have a gap for a sergeant missing for an extended period of time. It may be day, it may be afternoon. It would maybe be more day because then we would have more communication. Because if, if I need to know what's going on, it's not going to typically be on midnights. However, if that lieutenant has an issue where we need to address some items during the midnight shift, then that's where he'll have to go until we remedy that and then go on to the next thing.
Stan, you have something? Thank you.
Couple of questions if I may. As I look at some of the demands that have been made on the police force in the last three to six months and what I think is a trend of more high-level crime and criminal behavior from shootings to drug traffic and the like. I'm wondering if, while administration sounds kind of like, I'm not sure what they're doing, but they're administering something, is there a factor involved here where the efforts of a lieutenant might increase our conviction rate or improve our evidence processing or investigative work?
The, the lieutenant's position would open up a second detective's position. So we'd have two detectives in now, working one day shift and one afternoon shift. The lieutenant would be responsible for any type of solution to those crimes that you just mentioned. It would give him more time to concentrate on how to solve some of those problems, absolutely.
That appeals to me. I know there's a dollar and cents angle here too, but in addition to crime deterrence, when we finally apprehend someone, I'd really like to see them convicted and discouraged from ever doing that again. So if this is a step in that direction, it's a plus for me.
And, and you're right, the, we'll take the example of the shooting on Francis. Today, they're doing search warrants on eight cell phones. And eight cell phones takes hours and hours to extract that information off of one cellphone. So it takes a lot of time. And that, that shooting was in February.
The other question I have to dispose, if we, and forgive me because this may be simplistic, but if we can afford to pay for the overtime now, can we afford to bring in another officer based on the strength of that overtime expense?
I would think so.
Seems like we've already got the money. It's a question of how we spend it.
On that note, asking the officers in the room, would bringing another officer on reduce that overtime? Would it effectively, bringing another body in place?
Now, if you bring another officer on, that's not going to affect the sergeants' overtime, no.
That's an officer. However, then we would have to promote a sergeant to eliminate some of the sergeant overtime. You'll add an officer, but we still have the supervision issue. And also to Stan's point, a lieutenant position is directly reporting to the chief and myself. But their job is to be the patrol operations and ensure what happens in the community is focused on. That, that's what they're for. So it'll free up some of that time. So that's dedicated. That's what they're to do, is to ensure everything happens that way for us to move forward.
Some of this may change too with Adam, wouldn't it? He was one of our first sergeants on these six guys and since that tragic accident, I know he wants to come back. But with him not being there, I would imagine the other sergeants got to work some overtime too. So I would imagine some of the overtime will go back or go down if he comes back or.
That is, that is correct.
What is his status? Is this?
That may be one that you want to talk about in executive session.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Any other questions or comments on this, this evening?
I just see, I like her idea about bringing another officer street, on the street instead of that lieutenant.
Okay. That changes things just a little bit. But if there are any other comments on this, I'll look for kind of a straw poll on whether or not we should move forward with this. Like everybody has stated, this move on whether or not to create this position is, I don't want to call 7 to 8,000 dollars minimal, but generally speaking, it's not a huge financial decision, but it's more of a theoretical or management style. And I, and I do trust and value the opinion of our chief of police and, and the deputy chief. But this is, this is charting new territory for this village to have that third tier of management up at the top. And, well, I've said, I've said my piece with that, so. If we could go around the room, I would say, yes, you're in favor of the lieutenant position or no?
No.
Danny?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. And that carries. So we'll keep that in the budget. And I appreciate everybody for the conversation on that. I think it does highlight that we are working a lot of overtime right now with one officer out on, on leave, so.
Now, that being said though, I do like Stan's idea of possibly bringing in more officers. Because I know, we talked about sergeant overtime, but there's also patrol officer overtime as well. And I'm sure that even though your solution didn't work in the, the case of the sergeants, it may work in the case of the patrol officers, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you to Trustee Spurling though, for.
She did her homework.
I did.
Certainly.
I did hit print before I saw that it was an 84-page document, so you and the chief can split up the ream of paper you owe me.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget? This is the first reading, so if there are questions, things you'd like to see pulled. I do have just a few things that we, we did talk about that was proposed in the budget that this board has discussed and has pulled from the budget for this year. The part-time village hall reception, which is a $25,000 amount. The form-based code for the Mill District we talked about, and that's been pulled out of the budget. And then also the demolition of 213 Main Street, we had pulled out at this time. So that was for 30,000, so. That's all that I have. If there are no other comments.
I guess I missed when the, does that say receptionist instead of reception?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I missed that part. But long as we have enough people now to answer the phone, that was our biggest complaint. So that the thing wouldn't go ringing for a long time. I got one quick question on the, to Mike on the salt. We didn't buy any more salt.
We did not.
And yet the increase on the budget was 25,000?
Right. That's basically the amount of money that we, we budgeted 160,000 this year. And we didn't, we spent, I think, 140. So I had asked to increase next year's by 25,000. 20 of that would be MFT funds that we did not spend this year that we planned on spending. And then another 5,000 for just some cost increases in chloride and other.
Since we weren't able to purchase some more at the end of this year, we want to get as soon as we can next year to have that stock to start with.
Remember, he saved us money at 300 a ton or whatever, so that's good, that's.
I saved you more. We didn't buy any at 300.
No, that's why I'm glad we didn't buy.
So can I have another 10 on top of the 25, since I'm saving you so much money?
It, it really doesn't matter because this winter is never going to end. Yeah. Summer was Saturday and it's over.
We're back into fall.
I had a question for the administrator, if I may. We had discussed possibly looking at upgrading the village telephone system and maybe tying our different locations together, unify them.
Yes, and we do have that in our long-term plans. As we sat down with our IT consultants, had to look at the range of plans we had and had to prioritize that one. Didn't make it to the top of the list for this year, but I am hoping in the next year that it will get in there.
I think it's, it's worth doing when we can afford it.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item B this evening, which is also a first reading of ordinance 1616, which is setting the salaries in the village. And with that, I'll ask Director Van Voren for an update.
Thank you, President Brawley. In front of you tonight is the ordinance 1616 adopting the salary schedule for fiscal year 2015. Included in that is the bottom of the salary range does not have an increase in it. However, the top of the salary range has been increased by 2%. With that, if there are any questions in regards to the salary range, I can certainly answer those.
Excellent. I have a question. Well, just a comment. I think that the, the salary range, I think the, the salary range, the maximum for the code enforcement officer, quite honestly, I think it's too low.
Is that for the top of the range or the bottom of the range or?
Well, I think the, the minimum. We'll just say I think it's too low. We'll keep it at that.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments on the salary schedule?
Yeah, I think in the last few years municipalities have gone kind of with the flow of the, of the, of each other. Where we just keep expanding all the salaries and the private sector has pulled in because you just can't give 2% and then add 5%. And you, you can't keep giving people 7% or 10% raises or whatever every year. I mean, the, the private sector's not doing it, but municipalities has always seemed to, well, the town down the road did it, so then we want to be competitive. But I think now we should look, overlook at all the, all our pay classifications because we're getting people from other towns now, which mean we aren't the lowest. And I entirely agree with the, the unions. I think those are very fair because we did have a comparison to other towns. But we've got things now that, we're not comparing them to other towns. We just give the guy an extra 2% or an extra 5% and we just keep going. So I think sooner or later, we should stop. One town's got to stop this. One town's got to say, this is it. And I think we've been a leader in, in some examples of all the towns. And I think it's time we be a leader in this one too, that do a little comparison. And we don't have to always be at the top on, on some of these. And I think when we look for the financial director, we, we got the list of, I think Jamie, before she left, got a list of a lot of positions. And we were in pretty good shape on, on all of them. And when somebody's at the maximum and we go, well, he don't get his 2%, but let's just give it to him in cash. Well, what's the sense of having a maximum if the guy's going to get his bonus in cash? The private market don't do that anymore, at least for now. And I think we were very good during the good times and we weren't the highest. But I think now because of this, give him two, give him five, give him two, give him. I think now, because of this, give him two, give him five, give him two, give him five, and pretty soon, there's some good, and it's not just in, I say, I have no problem with the police or the public works, because we negotiated that and we knew what others did, and it's these right here. I don't see any problem, I guess, with the maximum, two percent, because it probably only affects two, three people. But I think we should look at the overall picture this year to kind of see where we are compared to everybody else.
I agree with what Denny says, and even though it sounds like I just went against what I said previously, I still think, like I said, the code enforcement officer position, I think the salary ranges are a little too low. But that being said, I agree with what Denny has to say, as far as once you reach certain levels, just because you have a heartbeat and come to work every day, doesn't mean you should get a one or two or three percent increase. I work in the public sector, or in the, I wish I worked in the public sector. I work in the private sector, and you know, I'm happy with keeping my job. And there's got to be, we can't, you're right, we can't hand out, here's two percent, here's three percent, here's five percent, plus your other one percent from here. We can't do that, because then all of a sudden, we're, in five years, we've gone up fifteen, eighteen, twenty percent. So we've got to find some sort of happy medium there. But like I said, I still think the code enforcement officer is a little low.
I think I agree with you in the code officer too, because of her, of her...
Or his.
Achievement and everything else, but...
You can't talk about that.
Remember, if you're going to talk about the individual compensation, skills, performance, that's executive session.
All right.
Here, we're talking about classification.
Okay, classification.
The one thing you're going to say.
I was going to say, if I could just clarify a couple things. The two percent increase to the range, that is just the range. People aren't getting that two percent increase. If you'll remember, last year, the board made the decision to stop with the cost of living adjustments, so they weren't giving out two percent here, three percent there. We are all on merit-based right now. So the range moved two percent to give people the opportunity to grow, but unless people are performing and get a good evaluation, they're not getting an increase.
How many people didn't get a merit increase percentage-wise?
Couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
I think that's the problem. In the past years, it was three to five percent every year. And like you say, it, the classification keeps getting bumped up, where you get five percent, five percent, and in four years, you got a twenty percent at the maximum. But like I mentioned before, there's probably only a couple people involved in this, so I don't really care if we pass this tonight. But we also, the insurance and also the retirement pension is, pension's very nice compared to a lot of pensions right now. So it's not that, not saying that our people don't work where they are, but I just want to compare it to other towns and say, we don't have to be on top or close to being on top.
What's a pension? I don't have one. No, I know what it is, but you see my point.
The other thing I was going to point out is that, the other thing the board agreed to change is that in the past, there was one increase if you were a marginal employee or an excellent employee, and the board agreed to give us some flexibility this past year, so we were able to recognize those who are performing over those who weren't. So, I mean, if you got a successful valuation, you got an increase. So there probably weren't very many that didn't get any increase, but this year, we were at least able to reward those who were doing a good job, I think, which was, I think, a good thing.
So your increase reflects, you know, your year.
Another question goes along with what Denny and Steve were talking about. Again, I'm in the private sector, and I have, I had a forklift operator, was not happy with his increase of a quarter an hour. I had to explain to him that it doesn't matter if you were the best forklift driver in the world and you do it for thirty years, the job only pays X. Just because you do it for twenty-five years doesn't mean I can pay you eighty thousand dollars a year to drive a forklift. That job pays this. A receptionist caps out somewhere. They can't be here for twenty years and be making twenty-five or fifty dollars an hour. That position just doesn't warrant it. So how does the village address that issue? How do they cap it? How do they stop it? Because from what I've seen is when we do, someone's at the cap, they've capped out now, they've maxed out, then we give it to them as a bonus. Well, that's not a cap. You're, I mean, it's smoke and mirrors. You're either at the cap or you're not at the cap, because you're still getting the check for the percentage.
Your base pay doesn't increase, but you can get a bonus if you get a successful merit increase.
So there really is no cap?
No, if you were, if you were not at the top, you would get that, and then the next time you got a bonus, it would be compounded on that.
It would compound, where if you hit the max, that is the most you're going to make there, but you can earn some bonus, yes, for...
Of course, tonight, we're raising that cap, and that's what I'm saying. We've always kept raising that cap to where some of these people just are always at the top, and they go, give me a couple percent more, I can put more in my pension, and I can see that. You know, we do have some good people, but I also see money floating around to some people that would have a hard time out there in the private sector right now, I think, so.
What if we issued a request for proposal, request for information from firms that might take a look at our compensation package in a holistic way and make a recommendation to us?
Justin's got a comment for you on that.
I have actually talked with Megan, our HR manager, already that in fiscal year fifteen, we will be doing a compensation study. We'll be doing it in-house instead of hiring someone out to do it. I've done those multiple times at Sugar Grove, and she's done them multiple times at Yorkville.
I think it's been a few years since we've done that, so that seems very timely.
So he has set that out as a goal for Megan in this coming year?
Okay. Just to reiterate, this two percent is not going to somebody. Just what my biggest concern would be in this, not so much the wage study, would be that we certainly have people who are at the top of their range. And if we were to decide tonight that that doesn't go up at all, that's at zero, you would have some of your most dedicated, longest-serving employees here at the village that received an excellent on their review, or whatever the scale is, that would get no increase to their base pay. That's my only concern, is that we have great employees here at the village, and we want to keep, at least I do, I would like to keep our long-serving employees here. You know, after, with all that institutional knowledge, we don't want, I don't want to send somebody to the next town, you know, to make a point. I agree with the wage study, and I look forward to reviewing that this year, but those are my comments. Any other comments from anybody?
One more comment, if I'm right. I think the merit increases are often based on skills enhancement or additional training that an employee agrees to engage in during the fiscal year. So it's not just a gift, it's something that we said, if you do this, it'll benefit you in this way, because it benefits us overall.
Right, and we have a set standard of questions that are answered, but then they're goals set for them. Some of them are usually project-related, and then some are personal development-related.
Okay.
Okay. This is first reading on this, so we won't be voting on this this evening. If you feel strongly one way or the other on this, you can either voice your opinion now, or actually, that would be preferred. If you would like more time, we can talk about it next week.
You can always contact Justin or myself.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Okay. We'll move on to an ordinance that we'll actually vote on tonight, which is sixteen eighteen. A blank copy of this was in your packet, and the actual document with the numbers in it was passed out when you got here today. So ordinance sixteen eighteen, which is supplemental ordinance, providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation alternate refunding bond series two, 2014. I shouldn't have read that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Finance.
Thank you, President Brawley. As discussed earlier, the bonds were sold this morning for the 2014 bonds with excellent results. The ordinance that was passed out when you got here, like President Brawley said, and then the results are the other item that was passed out. If there are any further questions on this, I can answer those.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any other questions of Justin or...
I appreciate Justin and Spear getting together and doing this. Appreciate that. That's worked out better for the village.
Excellent. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know we've heard, did you actually sit at your desk and watch this thing live online?
I did actually sit at my desk and watch this live online, yes.
That's awesome. I like it. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion for, to approve ordinance sixteen eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? Yes. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Item D this evening, which is a recommendation of the Plan Commission on PC 2014 dash zero zero six, which is our comprehensive plan. And with that, I'll ask Senior Planner Chipman for a report.
Thank you very much, President Brawley. Before you this evening is the Plan Commission's approval recommendation for the Go Montgomery 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The village, with the aid of state funding, has been engaged in the comprehensive planning process for just under a year now. The Plan Commission had a few comments on the, on the plan, which have been addressed and modified and presented before you this evening. The process is coming to a close very quickly. The state has mandated that all of the IC grants be completed by the end of April. So that being said, we're bringing before you tonight for vote just the Plan Commission's recommendation, and we want to dovetail that into the start of a discussion that, if necessary, can be continued through the committee of the whole next week, and then brought to, for final vote on Monday, the twenty-eighth with adoption. This evening, we do have our consultant, Devin Levine with House Levine, who would like to take us through the plan.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jared. Well, I guess it's with great pleasure that we're here at this stage, working with your community over the last year. We kicked this off on May the twenty-eighth, so it's been less than a year, and we're through this process, which is, I mean, in terms of some of the other communities we've worked in, pretty quick. A lot of communities sort of will get bogged down, and to see the consensus on a lot of the issues and the community priorities was good. We kicked off the process on May the twenty-eighth. We held an elected officials workshop on June sixth. We met with the residents of the west side of the community on June eleventh. I think we had scheduled an east side meeting on June thirteenth, but there was a weather-related cancellation. I don't know if you remember, it was like a, the sky was opening up, I think we canceled it under a tornado threat. But earlier that morning, we held a business workshop with the businesses in town. We ended up reconvening with the east side on June twenty-fourth. Over Montgomery Fest in August, we handed out postcards. We had a vision workshop with the residents on September eleventh. We also had a project website that had a number of different tools that allowed the residents to participate. And all of that outreach and working with the steering committee over the last year has really fostered the creation of this document. And let's see, it's about a hundred and forty pages, eleven by seventeen, so a pretty lengthy document. It's broken out into twelve sections, and just a reminder, what a comprehensive plan is, it's a long-range policy guide. It's not regulatory, it's not zoning, it's not going to preclude you from doing anything. What it, what it will do, it will sort of, we like to say it's a blueprint for the entire community. The different school districts, the library districts, all of your different taxing bodies, the village board, your plan commission, everyone will sort of know what the common objectives are for the community. They'll be able to refer to this document to see what the community's issues were back when we had all of these outreach activities. And it really is a guiding framework. And so when you mentioned some of the things you were looking to explore, potentially next budget year or the year after, a form-based code for downtown and the town center, this document will inform all of those future studies and efforts, and hopefully be used by you on an annual basis as you're working on budget discussions, to look to see the types of projects, actions, policies you can do to start to implement this document, which will start to achieve the long-range vision for the community. And it's tough to sort of present a hundred and forty-page document. I certainly can't read it, and I know a lot of you helped and were on the committee. And I guess, real quickly, the five chapters, we have a community profile. Well, the introduction is chapter one, we sort of provide a little bit of background along with all the different past plans and studies that have been created. We didn't start from scratch, there's been a lot of planning done in this community, and the relevant recommendations were carried forward from all the past plans and studies, as well as some of the regional plans, Kane County's 2040 plan, the Go To 2040 plan by CMAP. We did a community snapshot, we call it community profile. We looked at the market potential for the different types of land use to make sure our recommendations were grounded in a market reality. That's in chapter two. Chapter three, we summarize all the different outreach activities that have, that were taking place and what the community's priorities were. Chapter five is a land use plan. Again, it's not regulatory, it's not, this area's residential, so it has to be residential. We understand that the village can't see everything coming, and so what we try to do is describe in general terms what the land uses are going to be. And this is particularly true in the village's growth areas out on its west side, where we describe areas as primarily residential. It's not going to say that other types of land uses can't go in there, we're just sort of defining these areas and what, what the community would like to see them develop as. A big issue that we heard throughout almost all the outreach is hit head-on in chapter six, which is image and identity and community character plan. And as sort of a horizontal community, you run into a lot of different taxing bodies, and it's not always evident when you're in Montgomery and when you're in an adjacent community. And so the recommendations of that chapter look to strengthen the community's identity and as well as improve its image from within the village and from outside the community. Chapter seven, building on a lot of the work that Pete and his firm have done over the years, we present the transportation and mobility plan, not just addressing vehicles, but also bikes and pedestrians. Eight, the two park districts that serve the community, we try and bring their long-range plans together to put into village policy in the parks and open space plan. Chapter nine is a plan for community facilities and infrastructure. Part of the process, we reached out to every single community facility provider to get their long-range plans, and where their long-range plans were consistent with the long-range plans of the village, we carry those recommendations forward within here. Chapter ten, a component of the IC hazard mitigation grants, were the hazard mitigation plan, and we've integrated the, both the Kendall County and Kane County hazard plans into this document. And then chapter eleven, our subarea plans for three key areas within the community. And then lastly, section twelve provides some, some key steps for plan implementation. And so with that, I would be happy to field any questions you may have, and go dive further into the document if you, if you'd like.
Thank you, Devin. Are there any questions, comments from the board on this? I appreciate all the effort that went in, both from your firm, but also from the residents. I was at multiple events, you know, the morning and the afternoon events, and the, I did the online tool, just the amount of data that you must have gathered from those had to be quite useful in putting this together, so I appreciate that.
I would echo that. The amount of citizen effort that went into this has really been impressive, and it's made it a very valuable document. This is a plan that actually is a plan, and I think it'll guide us for years to come. So I'm very proud of it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none? Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
We'll see you again in 2035.
That'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation by Plan Commission.
So moved.
Moved?
Second? Second.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling? Yes. Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
And that carries six zero. Like Jared said, that we're looking to approve this in two weeks, so if you have any comments, bring them up at our Tuesday board meeting or committee of the whole meeting, because we're looking to approve that the week after, right? Excellent, thank you. Move on to... Move on to item E this evening, which is Ordinance 1619, amending the number of Class I liquor license. And this is a waiver of the first and passage on the second. And with that, I don't see who's taking this one. You?
I can.
Excellent.
This is unfortunately a reduction due to the closing of Kmart. So as we always do, whenever someone gives up a liquor license, for whatever reason, we reduce it down by that number. So there are no outstanding liquor licenses that someone can just take as a matter of right.
Excellent. If there are not any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1619.
Second.
Moved in second by Doug, take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. This dovetails right into Ordinance 1620, which is amending the village code to create a Class O liquor license for tasting events. And this is the first reading on this. And with that, I'll ask Attorney Anderson for his report.
Thank you. And this one is slightly different in that this is really a subclass of liquor license. In other words, you're not entitled to obtain one of these unless you already have a liquor license. So actually, in fact, in this case, we would recommend that the number of licenses be set at, say, five, so that if anyone wants to have one of these, they don't have to go through the board. They already have a liquor license, you know, Sam's Club, you name it, can just apply for it and have it. The idea is it's an annual license, although they don't have to apply for it annually. They could apply for it halfway through the year and get a prorated fee if you choose to impose a fee. That's one of the things you would need to decide. The concept is basically that they can hold tastings pretty much on any schedule that they want. We do ask that they provide us with an annual schedule. That is another thing for you to decide if you want that, you don't have to have that. And it's flexible. In other words, if that changes, they would just alert the Chief of Police to a change, even to the whole schedule. If they said, you know, now we're going to do it twice a week, but we've changed our mind, we're only going to do it once a week, that would be fine. So it's designed to be very flexible. It's also designed to allow the Chief of Police to impose new requirements or regulations, you know, kind of beneath the policy level, if there's some implementation questions that come up. So we think that it's generally a good thing if you feel that wine tastings are, are appropriate for the community. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
I do have a question. First of all, I think this is an excellent idea and it's a good step forward. My question is, should we define the volume of a tasting?
That's actually done by statute. We refer to a statute in there. And it is, I think it's, it's a very small amount. It's, I think a normal pour for a glass of wine is like four ounces. I think it's more like one ounce or something like that.
But there is no limit to the actual number of tastings a person can do?
No, I think that's also set forth in statute. Plus, plus the BACIT training that the, the BACIT training that, that all the employees have to go through, regulate all of these things. There's, there's good training for all of this.
I think they do theirs on Saturdays. Every Saturday, they do it.
And they would be free to do that.
I guess my question, I, I'm going to defer to the Chief of Police. Would you like to know when these tastings are going on?
Yes, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
I'll speak to the manager there, too.
Does this potentially do anything, say, at Montgomery Fest? Is this potentially, well, I guess it's not tastings. It's, that's more consumption of entire beverages.
Sure, and that's also a special event, and we have a different liquor license that does address that.
I think this is definitely appropriate for our community. Would like to see businesses, you know, when the mill opens back up, Gray's Mill, it'd be great if they could do something like this down by the river. So I think how we have it laid out is, is good. It protects the village. It also gives staff a little bit more, I don't want to say control, but they can handle this at the staff level so we don't have to approve and then, you know, eliminate a license every so often. So how does, how does the board feel about fees for this?
They're already paying a good fee, and I think the sales tax on all their stuff will, yeah, will make up for it. Pete's right, we don't really, right.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
Me as well.
Chief?
Just one quick question. If they do pay a small fee, that, that'll trigger our, our attention to that date. That was my only input.
But the fee would be, you'd get the license.
Just once a year, it wouldn't be each time they.
Oh, okay.
They did it.
All right, thank you.
As long as there's no paperwork, chief, so you have to keep filling stuff out.
Okay, and this is first reading on this, do you have the direction you need?
Is everybody good if we set it like that there would be five out there so that we could address it as they came in?
Five outstanding.
Five of these licenses.
Oh. Remember, because again, you cannot get one of these without already having a license.
Having a liquor license.
That way, instead of, like, if we do one now, there'd be one other. But if somebody else came in, we wouldn't have to come back every time to the board and say, are you okay with this tasting?
How many liquor licenses?
You'd basically make an administrative function. We'd have five out there that we could.
Ballpark?
About between 18 and 20.
Okay, yeah, five things.
This allows for any, any one of, anyone having a liquor license essentially can do this if they wanted to.
Correct.
Rosati's could do a beer tasting if they wanted to.
I would favor going higher if, if the quantity and the frequency is already regulated. Maybe 10.
It's not a big issue.
Doesn't matter.
I'm not concerned about a.
Abuse of a.
An abuse of it.
All right. This is first reading, so we'll see that again. Move on to item G this evening, which is Resolution 2014 dash 006, which is authorizing the application for Kane County Riverboat Funds and execution of all the necessary documents. And with that, I'll turn it over to Administrator Zofel.
Thank you, President Brawley. We've, this is an item we've had in our budget for the last two or three years. And it always gets pulled out at the end for, for budget cutting. And so we thought this might be a good way to try and get the, the books reprinted, is to see if we could get a riverboat grant for it. To try and help the success rate, it usually helps if you can show you have money coming from other places. So the Historic Preservation Commission, or Committee, has offered to put in $1,000. And the village would put in $1,800 to scan the old, the old book. So we'd have an electronic copy to start with. So, probably then I'd answer any, any questions.
I would just like to thank Trustee Bond for actually the suggestion of, for the riverboat granting that led me to call Debbie and suggest it, because he's aware of it.
Certainly. I think it's a worthy project, so.
Do we know when they make their decision? Does any, Stan?
I should know that. It'll be in the late summer, early fall, I believe. One, has the application been submitted yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if there isn't any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2014 dash 006.
So moved.
Moved in second, take the roll.
Moved by Youngerman.
Marasek.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Move on to item H this evening, which is Ordinance 1621, which is authorizing the renewal of aggregation program for electrical load, or municipal aggregation, or whatever we usually call it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Poobens.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your pack tonight is an, an Ordinance 1621 to authorize the village to renew our municipal aggregation program. In 2012, in the spring of 2012, just about two years ago, voters approved by referendum the village's participation in the residential municipal aggregation program. If you remember, that's when we had worked with a company called NYMEC, who bundles all our residential usage with residential usage from other towns, and we go out to bid for it. Since that time, you can see on the cover sheet, it saved an average of $248 per household in Montgomery. So it's been quite a savings. So that was a two-year contract. It's set to expire in August of this year. So approval of the ordinance tonight will allow the village to continue our participation in the municipal aggregation. We would continue to work with NYMEC. They would go out for bids for us. The way the ordinance is written, it would allow the village administrator, would give him authority to sign an agreement based on his opinion of the bids that came in. It would not require the aggregation question to come back to the board. So we would get bids, I would take them to Director, Administrator Zofel, and he would have the authority to sign the, the deal we thought was the best for Montgomery residents. Just a few points on the aggregation program in general. The margin or the difference between the bid prices and ComEd prices, you might remember, there were nearly three cents per kilowatt hour, almost 50% in 2012. Those have come together quite a bit. ComEd had some fixed-rate contracts for power that they were obligated to use. Those have expired, so their rates have started to come down. So we're not going to see as big a gap between the bid rates and the ComEd rates. And possibility is that the bid rates will be higher than ComEd, at which time we would probably recommend go back to ComEd. Another issue, long-term power rates normally are higher. There's been some market activity lately, the severe weather, and some others that have actually reversed that. So we're seeing that short-term rates are actually higher than, than long-term rates. Did I say that right? Yeah. So it's possible that we may recommend a long-term, a two- or three-year agreement. Now, this last one's two years, again, but we'll need to see where the bid prices are. So I've spoken with Dave Hoover, he's the Executive Director of NYMEC. We are, we may possibly go to bid this Wednesday. His opinion is that the rates are still pretty high, so he doesn't feel that he'll be recommending that we take any of those bids. But should they be favorable, we'd be in a position then to sign that agreement. If we don't take those bids, we can go out, there are multiple bids throughout the, you know, over time. So with that, I'd answer any questions.
Where'd you come up with this savings of $248?
That's based on the difference in electricity, on the power portion of the electricity bill for residential properties in Montgomery over the last two years. So over the course of the last two years, every household in Montgomery saved an average, it's an average number. Some saved more, some have saved less. But it's based on the difference in price in electricity. ComEd was around seven cents per kilowatt hour, and our contract was around 4.6 cents.
I was going to ask you something on this.
And that's over 15 months.
Right.
$248.
And I think that equates, I had this in the State of the Village, it equates to more than a million dollars that we kept locally, that we didn't pay off to ComEd, that people then could either save or spend on items here.
Almost $1.2 million.
That's amazing.
But you know, the ComEd comes out and fixes it, this, this outfit doesn't come out and do any work on your line or nothing?
No, this is just, all we're, all we're going out for bid for is the power supply. Trustee, that's an excellent question, because it comes up frequently. ComEd is now a delivery company. They don't produce electricity. And I guess I misspoke earlier when I said we might go back to ComEd. We might go back to Exelon, who is now the power generating portion of what used to be Commonwealth Edison. So ComEd crews still maintain the lines, they would still come out to your house if you had a problem. They still send you your bill. And under it, there's a portion, and you got to dig a little bit, but it'll say power supply and should say First Energy Services or something along that line.
No, everybody in the village didn't take this the way I understand it last time, did they?
They didn't have to. No, no, to answer your question, no. This is an opt-out program. So we go into it, including everybody, unless they sign a card, and they would get sent these cards in the mail saying, I don't want to participate. I want to stay with ComEd, I'm happy with them. But certainly, it's a choice. You can, you can buy electricity from wherever you want. We're just trying to offer what we feel is the lowest-cost opportunity for people.
Can you, as a resident?
You're welcome, trustee.
As a resident, can you switch at any time?
You can leave the program. There, I don't believe there are any switching fees in our contract. But once you hopped out, you can't get back in until we rebid it.
And is there any way that you could work it so that Justin could watch it online? I'm just kidding.
He finds this type, type of thing riveting.
If he has a terrarium at home with a snail in it, I could bring that in and set it on his desk. That's a little too exciting for him.
Sorry for that, Justin. If there aren't any other comments on this, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1621.
So moved.
Moved. Second. Trustee Marasek, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz.
And that carries six zero. Move on to item I this evening, which is Professional Service Agreement with EEI for the 2014 Pavement Management Study. And with that, I'll ask Director Poobens for a summary.
In your pack tonight is a proposed services agreement with Engineering Enterprises to perform a pavement management study update for the village. We did our first pavement management study in 2003, and then did subsequent updates in 2008, and another is scheduled for 2014. So this agreement would allow Engineering Enterprises to do our 2014 update. One major change in this proposal is the method in which we'll do the pavement analysis. In the past, it's been a visual inspection and professional opinion of the condition. This method uses a, make sure I get this right, well, electronic data collection. There are sensors on, mounted on a vehicle, and it drives through and gives us, we think is better data. It also does some non-destructive testing to give us some idea of the subsurface conditions. And then additionally, I believe this program will also allow us, because it's done, has a video element to it, allows us to pick up other objects in the right of way, such as fire hydrants, street signs, et cetera, that we can later catalog. We don't use them for pavement condition, but we can use them for other asset management purposes. So be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I had one question. The amount of area to be surveyed, I believe it was 75 miles. Is, is that essentially all of our paved surface that's our responsibility?
Pete, yes.
Okay.
The intent is to do all the roadways within the village.
Excellent.
And it doesn't say it on the cover sheet, but this is, the 80,000 that we budgeted is for FY15, correct?
That's correct. It is in the as-yet-proposed budget, it's one way, first reading for tonight.
What we're trying to do is give advanced approval, because that is information that we need personally and for the residents as we move forward with our sales tax referendum questions. So I know it's only two weeks, but it's advanced approval nonetheless, so.
The budget amount is 80,000, the amount of the agreement is 79,870. So chalk up more savings. All you had to do was spend 79,000, then we saved you 230.
Are there any other comments on this agreement? All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved. Second. Second by Marasek, take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
And that carries six zero. Move on to item J this evening, which is a waiver of bid and award of contract for 2014 mosquito control services to Clark. And that's in the amount of $27,000 and change. And with that, I'll kick it over to Director Poobens.
Thank you, President Brawley. Pretty much described this one very succinctly. It should look familiar to most of you. We've used Clark mosquito control for a number of years. This is technically a waiver of bid and award of contract. Clark has been our provider, as I said, for quite some time. This is a no-cost increase from last year. It provides the same types of services that we've had in the past, which includes helicopter applications for large areas of water, larval control. They supply, we call them brickettes. Our public work staff drops them in the catch basins. Adult control, which is the misting, we do some of that at Montgomery Fest in the park. And then there's four applications village-wide that they use a truck for that we've talked about and some of the issues with that. The amount of this agreement is $27,894. The budget is $40,000. The budget is higher to allow us some buffer in the event. Clark also monitors, it's how you think watching bond pricing is exciting. Clark monitors larval development and mosquito populations, and will make recommendations to us for further treatments. So we do have some buffer in there for additional treatments should the board decide to do that. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I do notice one service that they, I believe, are including in this, and that is some public education activity, including literature. I think that might very well be helpful. We may be able to reduce this mosquito population of people, just better understand what role they can play. they can play.
We could certainly work with them on getting some things on our website, and we usually have literature here at the village hall.
Excellent.
Yes.
And instead of having an Eagle Cam, then we could have a mosquito larval cam, and...
Or we just borrow Justin's.
I thought Justin wanted to do a ride-along one night when they were spraying.
This is what happens when the meetings take too long.
No, it's only been an hour and a half, too, and we're getting a little...
It's more fun to ride your bike behind it in the middle. Chief and I did that as kids, it didn't affect us for it.
Not yet.
I apologize, Ray.
That's all right. With all that, I'll entertain a motion to approve item J.
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Ban.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Yes. And I carry 6-0. Item K, authorization to purchase one 2014 International 7400 truck cabin chassis. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. This request to purchase the International cabin chassis, this is an advanced, request for advanced authorization. We'd like to start the process on purchasing this truck. It is in the proposed FY15 budget, but there are cutoff dates, and probably more importantly with this is just the time it takes to get the truck delivered, and then later, in the not to do this in the future, I'll be bringing back another item to approve, award of a contract, actually put the salt spreader, we buy the salt spreader unit from another company, Banel Industries generally, they'll attach it to this. So the time it takes to get all that work done can be several months, so we're asking for advanced authorization, so we can get it on the ground here in time for the upcoming snow season.
It's never going to end.
Oh my gosh.
So this is through the state bid program, Central Management Services, and the truck purchase would be $69,789. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a question. This is the authorization to purchase. Sometimes we see the waiver of bid, is that...
Well, this one, I, generally, we ask for a waiver of bid when we don't have a formal bidding process. I haven't asked for that, because the State of Illinois Central Management Services goes through an extensive bidding process and makes the award. They open up this bid, then the municipalities, counties, et cetera, to participate. So generally, more than generally accepted opinion is that it has been bid, so we're not asking for a waiver.
I get you. I just saw in the past that we, even if it was bid out, we would still say that? At least that's what I was...
It would have appeared that way on previous...
Okay.
Either, I think, either way, I think Director Povens is right. It clearly has been bid.
Right.
But we didn't do it, so you can argue it either way.
Okay.
This changes more to clarify the difference. We've had some conversations in the past on what the waiver means.
And this, no local, this was, the conversation with local dealership about honoring state bid pricing?
Not this truck, no.
Not this truck?
No, there are no international dealers in the village. There is another truck in the budget, it's not in the agenda tonight, that we're, we'd like to consider looking at a state bid process, but if they're, if the local vendor of that make and model, one can provide the truck we want, and two, do so at an equivalent or lower price, we would likely recommend purchasing it locally. That'll be...
Are you going to get a stainless steel spreader from Banel on this?
That's the intent. We're going, the, two separate things, yes, we're going to get, we're going to get stainless steel, we're talking to Banel.
You're just going to get the spreader and mount it on the truck, or you're going, you're not going to get a box either, are you?
That's correct.
Okay.
The last few trucks, just for clarification, we're just mounting this, the salt spreader...
It's mounted on the frame.
Right on the frame of the truck, rather than getting a dump body and inserting a spreader. One, it's less expensive. Two, we just don't need that many dump bodies. And three, the maintenance and cleaning of it is much, much easier. So we've talked about that many times, about wanting to keep these trucks for quite some time, so. Yes, you're welcome, thank you. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions on that? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the authorization.
So moved.
So moved. Second. Moving second by Trustee Marisak, take the roll, please.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Ban.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Nice. I'll move on to the last item for separate action this evening, which is the waiver of bid and authorization to purchase two 2014 Ford Police Interceptor sedans. With that, I'll ask Director Povens for a summary.
Thank you. This actually is a waiver of bid, because there is no state bid on the Taurus sedan. The item in general is to, we have two vehicles approved in the proposed budget, one to replace a Trailblazer, and the other is a Crown Victoria. So neither of those vehicles is actually made any longer, and so generally, we'll work with the chief and his staff to try to identify the vehicle that best fits the needs of the department at that time. The chief has talked to other departments and inspected some other models and makes, and how they're set up, and has requested the Ford Taurus. The company that we're proposing to buy these from, Marl Brothers, did win the state bid for another Ford police vehicle, so that's how we started the conversation with them. They're able to offer the Ford municipal bid price to us, which is a discounted bid. I can't say that it's the absolute lowest bid we would get, but I feel that it's certainly economically sound to accept that, that we could do our own bid, and maybe do a little better, but possibly do no better than that. So you can see, I won't go through all the items that are included in this bid, but they are on the next page of the packet. There's a memo that shows the base bid pricing, the police lighting, and then we do buy quite a bit of other equipment from various vendors, it won't be from Marl Brothers. So the total cost per vehicle is $45,980 for $291,960. So the amount of money to Marl Brothers will be, I believe, $62,170. And then we'll send it to different places, or have, we get a lot of equipment sent in that Fleet Mechanic Alan Duncan will install. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
One question, if I may. Is leasing these vehicles an option that we would want to consider?
It's possible, trustee. I don't have a lot of experience with leasing police fleet. I can tell you that police vehicles are outfitted, they're not unique, but each department has its own preferred setup, so that would be one challenge of doing a lease program. Now, we are currently involved in a lease-to-own program with the Ford Tahos, so it's a little bit different, though. Those we're going to own at the end of three years, it's just spreading out our payments.
That's essentially what I was, I should have described it in that fashion. With our, I was thinking our finance department might be able to take advantage of that capital for a couple of years if we spread out the payments.
I think with two vehicles, I mean, it would, our payment would be down a little bit, I'm not sure it would be, if we spread the cost of these two over three years, I guess you'd be looking at $35,000 per year as opposed to 92 now. Director Van Born has spent quite a bit of time reviewing our Vehicle Reserve Fund, and looked at different funding options, and has made some recommendations, and I'd, I'd say this is in line with what you feel is a feasible direction to go to purchase these outright, but...
Correct. There are costs associated with leasing vehicles, additional costs, call it interest, if you will. And so if we do have the funds available, I would certainly recommend outright purchase. And then after the amount of time that we have those vehicles, we will certainly try to sell them if, if we can, at the end of their useful lives.
I have one question. We had talked previously about the, is it vehicle preemption, is that what it's called? Do we, is that something that we look for standard, or that we add to all of our new vehicles?
No, we do not add it as a standard item yet. We've talked in the past, and we're getting the preemption equipment added to our traffic signals throughout town. We haven't yet tackled the issue of getting preemption devices on all the vehicles. Chief, I'm going to look to you, Paul, I don't recall, do we have them on the Tahos?
Yes, some, some of our fleet has it currently, but we have to add it.
I could look, I could look into the cost of that for these two vehicles.
Yeah, if you can, that'd be, I was thinking that for the Tahos, it was $1,500 or something six in my head, and I, I just see that we're investing in the intersections, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars when I does an intersection, and for our police officers to not have that available to them, seems like we're doing something wrong. If it's a small amount, I don't know if that screws up your, your purchase today, but...
No, I mean, we're actually, with this $91,000 total cost, we're under budget by $7,000 or $8,000, so...
If you added that, that would come with the equipment part, right, not the, this is just for the vehicle.
It's just a purchase of vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, let me clarify, I've included the cost for all the additional equipment. Generally, I do not come back to the board and ask for additional approval, so I'm asking for approval of those additional purchases. Most of them are, are, you know, the most expensive is $4,800, most of them are relatively inexpensive, so we generally don't come back. So assuming that the preemption devices that would go on the vehicle are in that same range of price, $1,500 each or so, I would just amend this list to include those, and we'd purchase them if they fit under the budget. If that's acceptable to the board.
I think that having the continuity across the vehicles, if an officer's used to driving a vehicle with them, and suddenly is driving a vehicle without them, could be in for rude awakening as they come up to that intersection.
No, it's a great suggestion. I had quite actually forgotten about the preemption, so...
Our fire departments have them, and yeah, I think even Ridge Ambulance has them, so our police should have them.
They work well.
You know what, I'd actually prefer that we do on this one is, we approve this as stated, and then when you get the cost for the preemption, if you can bring that cost back. I know that that won't hold up the vehicle, but this way, we're not going into, you know, completely blind, if you don't mind.
Not at all, be happy to do that.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Ban.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And I carry 6-0. Moving on, items for discussion this evening, the IDOT project status update, and back to Director Povens.
Thank you, President Brawley. I just wanted to give a brief update on the IDOT projects. The US 30 project, which is the widening from Briar Cliff to Route 34, is currently about eight weeks behind schedule. Plody Construction has been working during the winter, but as we all remember, the weather was not very conducive to a whole lot of construction work. They've made some progress lately on pavement removal, and anticipate that they'll start putting down the new eastbound pavement in May. They're also working on the Soundberry while on the south side of Route 30, between Briar Cliff and Douglas. So it's likely that they will ask for an extension of time from IDOT. IDOT is not, they haven't seen their request for extension, so they can't weigh in on it until they officially see it, but it's unlikely that this will be done by the original August completion date, but Plody does feel that late fall before Thanksgiving is certainly feasible, so. The next project, the Illinois Route 31 interchange reconstruction, that's being done by deconstruction, is also about eight weeks behind, and they will also likely ask for a request. We, at our status meeting last week, they felt, also felt the project would be done in 2014, could be a little bit after October, possibly December, depending on how the work goes. They're currently continuing on bridge deck construction, and some work underneath the bridge on piers, et cetera, drainage improvements in the infield, and they started to do part of Illinois Route 31 under the structure is going to be torn out and reconstructed. They have to actually raise the grade to, in part, meet the new ramp grades and the Watkins Street crossing grades, so you can see they milled further back, there will be some resurfacing on parts of it, but there will be some reconstruction in both northbound and southbound. So I had a call from Trustee Youngerman today with a question about some traffic control, some, maybe some of you went through it today. There was concern over the safety of the traffic control as being applied, generally a lack of advance warning, that was causing some severe and sudden driver movements as they shifted lanes. I did speak to IDOT, who looked into it. Apparently, the contractor's crew was working on some sandblasting, and took it upon themselves to initiate that loosely-called traffic control. So it was, it was not an approved or planned detour. IDOT has spoken to the contractor, they'll continue to monitor, monitor it, but obviously was a concern today. But there were no accidents I'm aware of, so we made it through that, but...
Thank you for checking into that.
You're welcome.
The metal piers that they put in, will they cut those off?
They'll be pulled out of the ground.
Okay, they'll come out.
They're there to hold up the embankment while they do widening work on the pavement, and some boring work underneath, they bore some pipes through the embankment.
That's modern art.
So I was getting a little concerned.
Like the church bells, when that hammer's pinging them out, so...
I heard it Saturday down here.
Yeah, those will come out eventually.
Get them closer to my house. Could you in the next couple of, since we're on this widening project, can you in the next couple of months, at one of the committee of the whole meetings, you and Pete, bring us something back on the Montgomery Road? I had a resident call me that talked to people, and they say it's going out for bid probably on the engineering in January, and I know there was, one of our trustees went to one of the meetings that we, that they had, and I didn't make it, but I would like to know what's going on there, just like this resident would.
Yeah, we can certainly bring an update in.
Okay, thank you.
We'd appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah. Just one other quick IDOT update, the Watkins Road Crossing is actually a separate contract. Deconstruction also has that, so it'll, it'll look like they're part of the same project, but that work is, the Watkins Street Crossing construction is scheduled to start the week of the 21st, so next week. The first step that D will do is start their curb and gutter work, which will run east-west along Watkins, which will require that they close off Railroad Street to the south. Now, that's always been part of the plan to do that, that's not new, but IDOT put up some changeable message boards, start alerting people that the road will be, Railroad Street southbound towards Case will be closed in the next week or so. And then they'll continue to do the Watkins improvements. Case Street will remain open for some time yet, so vehicles will be able to get in and out of the neighborhood and from the businesses there. There may be a short period later this summer where both Case Street and Watkins crossings are closed, and I'll, I'll bring an updated schedule as we get closer, but that has to do, again, with the reconstruction of the Route 31 pavement, has to be raised. Burlington Northern Railroad is going to start their work in about a month, I was told. They have to raise one of the rails up to meet the grade and start constructing the crossings and the new signals. So you will see some changes out there. Railroad Street South, when it hits Watkins, will be cul-de-sac, so it will be a dead end at Watkins.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any new or unfinished business this evening?
I have, go ahead, Pete.
Mike, on Briar Cliff, from Montgomery Road to, to Seasons Ridge Boulevard, you've got some big holes in there, and on that Seasons Ridge Boulevard, you got to tear that whole road out, that thing is falling apart.
Engineer Wallers and I, that, I don't disagree with you, and I'll talk to Gary about getting the patching guys out there again this week. I think they went out late last week and got some of them, but we've actually contracted with a firm to do some pavement cores for us, so we can get a better idea of how extensive the, the damage is to both Seasons Ridge and Briar Cliff, I believe, Pete, is in that contract, so we'll be coming back to the board with a discussion on just what the condition of both Seasons Ridge Boulevard and Briar Cliff are, some estimates on what it'll cost us to fix them, and then the discussion on where that fits in in the road program.
I'll tell you what, you can't leave those roads go another year, because them, them things are terrible.
They're in bad shape.
They're in very bad shape. They're in very bad shape.
It's gonna come down to more roads to repair than money to do it, which, that's not a new question for all of you. I'm not trying to, you know, imply that it is. But we'll have to have that discussion, 'cause it may require shifting some of our funds this year from roads that we had added in our five-year plan to...
You're gonna have to fix that one this year, because that ain't gonna last another year.
It's some very bad spots on it.
An easy question on that. Do we have any idea the last time Seasons Ridge Boulevard was resurfaced, or when was it built?
We do. I haven't committed it to memory. I mean, it's, within my tenure as director, we did a, I guess I'd call it a partial reconstruction. Pete, do you recall the year?
I don't. We can find out.
Just curious, 'cause we're, as we, I don't think, I need to get into the whole sales tax referendum question again. But as we look at that, we're talking 74 years for some roads, and that's inside of 10 years, and we're having to do it again. So it just highlights the problem that we will have going west in 10 years.
Speaking of which, I have three items. One, my third item was there's a pothole at the south end of Griffin, and it, pretty bad. I mean, it affects Matt more than anybody.
Except by William?
Yeah. I think Matt was afraid to bring it up. He wanted me to do it.
I'll be honest, I didn't even notice it. Must've just gone right around him.
Some guys can drive better, huh?
My other two things, a resident had brought up something to me. There's a crosswalk on Mayfield Drive that she had expressed concerns that people weren't stopping. And I don't know if this is some, apparently, it's not a marked crosswalk. And is this something where, I haven't been out there yet to look at it.
I did.
Is it marked?
I don't believe so. I think it's just, it's a, it's a crosswalk. There's a curve. And I know that I once drove through there and had a lady yelling at me. I suggested perhaps she should cross at the corner, but it wasn't marked.
But is it a, it is a legitimate crosswalk. It's...
Yeah, I think that there's just no striping.
It's not a crosswalk.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, in that case, I don't think there's any crosswalks over there. I don't see anything marked.
Can you check it, check it out, please? And then the other item...
Request is she thinks it should be marked better and...
She had mentioned, I had asked her if it was marked. She said no. She'd also mentioned something about the same type of signage that's over at Lakewood Creek, and I understand those are private signs. So Lakewood Creek puts those out. I don't think that's something that the Village puts, puts in, in the middle of crosswalks. I don't, we would have those...
No, those, those were unique to the school situation there.
Correct.
It's a cooperative effort.
If, if it falls into the category of a legitimate crosswalk, if we could have it marked, maybe a couple of signs or something put up indicating that you're coming up to a crosswalk, I think that's the first, first hurdle to get through.
Engineer Wallers and I'll take a look at it and report back. Is there a cross street or an address nearby?
We'll, we'll find out and send you an email.
Thank you.
He says we, he means he...
Yeah, that's, that's me, me. The last thing, some residents had asked me, we have this Montgomery wide garage sale that's taking place soon, but our throw out anything in the garbage day is before the garage sale. So in the future, can we switch that?
It always has been.
We, we can't, because the next weekend is Mother's Day. And if you went, or the weekend before, if you went, you'd be doing it on Mother's Day and you wouldn't get anything.
For the garage sale.
But it usually... What if, what if we push the garage sale a week sooner?
That's what I'm saying.
That's Mother's Day.
Push it a week later, then. And then do the, the absolute trash collection the weekend after that. Because people wanna get rid of all the stuff they don't sell.
You'd have to move the trash collection late. Get me?
No, I'm still confused.
I think I asked Debbie the same question.
The, the trash collection day currently is the week before the garage sale? So they would either have to move the trash pickup to the week after? You can't move the garage sale forward, because the week before is Mother's Day weekend?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Why can't we move the trash pickup to the weekend?
That was set already, and so they, they had no choice. They talked about this at the store. They had no choice once that date was set.
We can look into it.
Oh, next year, maybe.
No, I'm not talking about doing it this year.
In the fall, they do it that, in the fall, they do it that way. But you have Mother's Day and you have Easter, and you usually get all, you know, we could talk about that next year as far as spring one goes.
This, it might be a compromise, since the garage sale would end Sunday night and garbage starts Monday morning. Just do them both in the same weekend.
Just leave it in your garage or in your driveway and shove it out in the corner.
Why handle it twice anyway?
That's actually, that's a really good idea.
I'll talk to Executive Assistant Buchanan. I know she and I have spoken on this a few times. And then I'll talk with Allied and see how much lead time they would need to change.
Okay, thank you.
And I can report back.
I have a generic question. When cold patching happens, or when they patch these potholes, I've seen this several times. They're, and I don't mean here necessarily, but they throw the patch down and drive away. They don't tamp it. They don't, is there, educate me.
Ideally, the hole is square and dry, but generally with pothole patching, that's unusual. So it, it improves the patching if you strike the top of the cold patch off and compact it. It's something that we have to remind our own staff of frequently. I will say, in, in their defense, on some roads, high-traffic roads, et cetera, that can be kind of a challenge. But the more you can compact it, the better. But even at that, it's not intended to be a permanent solution, although all too many roads have.
Well, it just seems to me like we're throwing, you throw good money after bad. You're throwing a patch down there, and 50 cars later, half the patch is gone.
By traffic. So we continue to work with our staff on improving how we do that operation.
I got one quick comment. And as I wore my Badger shirt tonight, and we got screwed in the NCAA by a bunch of football referees. We let them play football, but I did call up to my Wisconsin house. And if you can believe this, by O'Clair, they have eight inches of snow up there yet, and the lake will not unfreeze until May 1st. And all they seen was this Badger, 'cause they had the Badger, this Badger digging in the snow, and he was burying these Buckeyes. So I just wanna bring that up.
Wait until football season.
Thank you for the storytime.
Trustee, that happened to...
For those that don't know, I am Ohio State alumni.
Illinois got the football refs in 1995 against North Carolina, so.
This is gonna be a longer discussion, I think. All right, we'll move on. Future meetings, the planning commission meeting for this Thursday has been canceled. You can see the rest of the meetings on there. There is no executive session this evening. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved in second. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.